Welcome, everybody, to this regular session of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is December 14th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business, as always, is the Pledge to the Flag. Please rise and join me.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Haley.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Item four on our agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion that we approve item four A and B, as stated in the minutes, for approval of the work session and the regular session that was held on November 16th and November 23rd respectively.
Second half.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item five on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, as stated in the agenda packet.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously, as well. Item six on our agenda tonight, under licenses. Six A is a resolution granting victualing and holiday sales licenses to Rose Hill Golf Club. And item B is a resolution granting a victualing license to Mary Murphy's of Main Street. Now, I think we can take these together, subject to approval of the public hearings later in the evening. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to approve item number six A and B, subject to approval of the public hearing.
I second.
Transfers of the licenses.
I second that.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to the public hearings, unless I skipped over something.
Nope, seven.
All right. Public Hearing A is a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended as follows. Transfer of a Class B victular liquor license from Rose Hill Golf Club by James P. Manning, President at 222 Rose Hill Road, Wakefield, to Rose Hill Golf Club Incorporated by James Manning, President at 222 Rose Hill Road, for the first floor of the clubhouse and adjacent patio in accordance with a special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on May 23rd, 2001, and is further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. And in order approving special master's final report and recommendation in accordance with the granting special master's motion to approve settlement agreement, WB number 14532. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims. Any other?
There was one communication on this from Rhode Island Distributing. They object due to indebtedness in the amount of $317.54.
All right. So that'll be placed on the record. Would that be covered under this? Any further?
Is there anybody here on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Manning, yeah.
I can answer any questions.
Sure. First, just state your name and where you live.
James Manning.
Thank you.
I'm the owner and operator of Rose Hill.
Any questions for Mr. Manning? You heard that there was an objection written by?
Yes, that's Rhode Island Distributing. It's a matter of course with them. I spoke with them. Their feeling is because it's, the license is transferring, there are actually two invoices that I'm current with, they're actually getting paid tomorrow, so there's no issue with that. It's just a matter of course.
All right. Well, if there are no questions from us, is a simple transfer. Are there any comments from the public? Then I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And now I'm looking for?
I make a motion to approve item number seven A, the transfer of the Class B vehicular license.
I'll second that motion. I don't know if it has to be contingent upon the payment of that $317.
Yeah.
Contingent upon, but the verbiage in the memo said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing.
Yes.
Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
So moved.
And I will second that motion.
All right. Any comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Public Hearing B is a hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. This is a transfer of Class B victular liquor license from 333 Main Street LLC, doing business as Fat Bellies Irish Pub, by Scott Parker, to Mary Murphy's LLC by Patrick Guadara, member 333 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for the first floor dining room and bar area in accordance with a special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on May 19th, 2010, and is further defined in a site plan dated March 19th, 2010, on file in the town clerk's office. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims. Is Patrick Guadara here? Anything to add to the file?
We have three objections to this transfer due to indebtedness, and those are from Horizon Beverage of Rhode Island, due to indebtedness in the amount of $1,765.49. McGlaughlin and Moran Inc., due to indebtedness in the amount of $1,691.58. And Rhode Island Distributing, due to the indebtedness of $2,127.11.
Thank you. Anything to add? Steve?
No. The normal cost of business would be to determine what type of business would be operated and how different it would be from the existing license holder.
And that is why you are here for us.
Oh, we're going to open up an Irish bar and restaurant again, but more an authentic one. It's myself, my partner, Dave Swanson. The previous owner, Scott Parker, has nothing to do with it. We're purchasing straight out from him. We're going to pay his debt as long as we know that the transfer will go through, so those debts will be paid tomorrow or Wednesday.
So, yeah, any questions for the applicant?
Are there going to be any change in your hours of operation from the previous?
No, the same hours, 11:30 to 1:00, seven days a week.
Is this your first restaurant, or you have locations elsewhere?
This is the first one, yes. It's my only one, so.
Do you want to take a little time to tell us about your menu, or?
Yeah, it's going to be solid food. It's not fine dining. It's not anything. It's a little better than pub food, more healthy alternatives, family-friendly. Just want to create a good neighborhood bar.
Sounds good.
I saw your menu. Mlgan stew and a lot of the Irish, yes.
Couple of good things in there.
Your floor plan looks great, too, that we have here. I like the design in there with the, it looks like you're going to have booths?
No booths, no tables.
Oh, okay.
So flow a little better, so it'll be safer.
Oh, great. Oh, looks wonderful.
Any other questions from the council? And are there any comments from the public on this public hearing? All right. Well, then I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And we need a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve item letter B for the victulating license to Fat Bellies, to Mary Murphy's. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of your certificate of good standing from the State of Rhode Island and the Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, and the payment of any municipal taxes that are due, and user fees that are in arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item seven C is a public hearing relative to an application to perform construction activities within 25 feet of an historic cemetery in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 14 of Planning, Article Four, Historical and Archaeological Cemeteries and Burial Sites. Application is by the RI Department of Transportation to conduct land disturbing activities in proximity to the old St. Francis Cemetery on the west side of High Street, adjacent to the Town Hall parking lot, as part of the planned reconstruction of High Street.
The council is aware that the High Street project is planned for construction to begin on, early in 2016. We are expecting at that point, the construction of probably between 18 months and 24 months. We're also looking at a construction that most likely will, we will allow for Saturday operations for the contractor, since there'll be limited hours, or limitations on their hours of operation in proximity to Wakefield School, as an effort to try to get the project completed on a timely basis with as few difficulties as possible. One of the requirements of the town ordinance is that any time a construction of any activity is going to occur within 25 feet of a cemetery, historic cemetery, that there must be a public hearing conducted. In advance of the public hearing this evening, the town provided specific notice to the town's historical, South Kingstown's historical district commission, to the Rhode Island Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission, Pettis Quamscut Historical, Narragansett Indians, and the owner of the property, St. Francis Church. We've received no comment or objection to any of the work approved. We do have a representative from DOT here tonight that I'd ask the council as to the specifics.
Yes, please come forward. State your name, who you're representing for the record.
Hello. My name is Jacob Bijan. I'm a historic preservation specialist with the Department of Transportation. I'm joined by David Kapalvo, who's a principal civil engineer. I prepared a brief statement, and then I'll be available to answer any questions you might Good evening, Mr. Town Manager, members of the Town Council, and members of the audience. The Rhode Island Department of Transportation, in cooperation with the Federal Highway Administration, is preparing final design plans for the improvements to High Street and Kingstown Road project located here in South Kingstown. During the course of RIDOT's Cultural and Historic Resources Review of the project, Old St. Francis Cemetery, also known as South Kingstown Historical Cemetery Number 42, was found to be within the project area. Old St. Francis Cemetery is described as follows. The cemetery is located just south of where we sit tonight in South Kingstown Town Hall. It is enclosed with a stone wall and marked by a historical cemetery sign. Many of the gravestones mark the final resting place of Irish immigrants and give the location in Ireland where the deceased was born. There are approximately 150 gravestones in the cemetery. James N. Arnold recorded the cemetery in 1880. The earliest marker is dated 1855, and the latest is dated 1905. The cemetery was also recorded by John Sterling in 1991. All extent gravestones were photographed by Julie Nathanson in 2014, and are available for reference at the Rhode Island Advisory Commission for Historic Cemeteries online database. The work proposed adjacent to Old St. Francis Cemetery involves the removal of existing sidewalk and curbing, and the installation of a new cement concrete ADA compliance sidewalk, installation of granite curbing, and a wheelchair ramp, and installation of a new drainage structure, a catch basin. The exterior boundary of the cemetery is approximately, the approximately three and a half foot high stone wall and wood gate. The closest headstone is approximately 27 feet from the existing edge of the roadway pavement. No ground disturbance will take place beyond the present state highway line. No historic cemetery features, memorials, markers, or landscaping of the cemetery will be disturbed or otherwise affected by the proposed improvements included in this project. RIDOT is providing the town of South Kingstown with this information during this public hearing, in accordance with South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 14, Planning, Article Four, Historical and Archaeological Cemeteries and Burial Sites. The Rhode Island Department of Transportation is requesting approval by the Town Council for the elements of the project, which are within 25 feet of the old St. Francis Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for DOT?
I think he answered them all.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the public on this matter?
I would like to introduce Dave Kapalvo from DOT. Dave's been responsible for shepherding this project through, even though it started before he was born. But he's a local resident, and I think we'll be, we'll be seeing a good deal of him during that construction season. So just, Dave, if you could give a couple of comments as far as the project's starting, how you see it going?
Good evening. Again, my name's Steve Kapalvo. I'm the project manager from Rhode Island Department of Transportation. At this point, we're in the process of finalizing temporary easements for construction. We have received the environmental permitting. The plans are pretty much complete. We're in the process of putting together the funding authorization for federal funds. We anticipate advertising this project in either late February or early March, hopefully late February. And based on, you know, the 30-day advertising process, the bid reviews and the award, sometime in late May or early June, we anticipate construction to begin.
One of the other things I wanted to point out is, we've talked about the project initially as being High Street from Main Street to, to the rotary. That project has been expanded to include the rotary, as well as the drainage improvements there, and to take it all the way to, to the north road. So what we're looking at is really a full construction, as well as dealing with the sidewalks and the drainage throughout the village. So that was added, I think, within the last year, as far as considered.
Correct. Yeah, some drainage concerns that exist currently on, on Kingstown Road that have been addressed.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for? No. All right. Do I hear a motion to close this public hearing?
Being a public hearing, I'd ask that you determine whether there's anyone from the public that has comment.
Yeah. I thought I asked that before, but.
Kenny Burke, 28 Southland Court. Just wanted to mention, and kudos, Dave, for finally bringing this project close to fruition. One thing, however, and I know that Dave has to wait until they actually bid the project to get a project schedule in hand. The council really needs to pay close attention to this. It's going to be a war zone for two years. It's a great thing, because this is going to be a beautiful corridor once it's complete. But you're really going to have to pay close attention to what the contractor suggests for construction sequencing, which is going to send traffic out into the neighborhoods for a very long period of time. Absolutely positively necessary, bitter medicine, well worth it, long overdue. Just want to make that point.
Thanks, Kenny. Any other comments from the public? All right. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. Any further commentary? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Now need a motion to approve the construction activities within 25 feet.
I make a motion to approve number seven C, a public hearing which we just discussed, relative to perform the necessary construction activities within the 25 feet as required for a historic cemetery in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 14, Planning, Article Four, Historic and Archaeological Cemeteries and Burial Sites.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, as well. Public Hearing D is for the purpose of formalizing local recommendations and establishing project priorities for transportation projects for consideration of inclusion in the state of Rhode Island's Transportation Improvement Program for federal fiscal years 2017 through 2025, as shown on Exhibit One of your agendas. Then, it looks like, oh, we have something to enter.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Vincent Murray, the town's director of planning. And this public hearing relates to the State Planning Council's solicitation of, for the process of developing Rhode Island's Transportation Improvement Program for federal fiscal years 2017 to 2025. The last such solicitation that we participated in was in 2011. And the tip itself, or Transportation Improvement Program, is a list of projects the state of Rhode Island intends to implement using the U.S. Department of Transportation funding. It is a list of transportation projects that the state intends to fund, but it is not necessarily a commitment. There are dependencies of funding, permitting, design, what have you, but it is a forward-thinking document, and identifies local needs and needs across the state to be addressed for, from an infrastructure perspective. For the current solicitation, the state is using a process that's a little bit different than past efforts, essentially dividing the tip into two parts. First covers the four-year period, representing the formal tips, traditional tip submittal, and the second component is related to RIDOT's 10-year strategic plan. The 10-year strategic plan, which has been in the news quite a bit lately, indicates DOT's shifting of a focus towards an asset management-based planning orientation, and much of this focus is intended to address deficient conditions relating to bridges and other infrastructure in the state. The strategic plan also identifies two potential funding pathways. The first is the traditional model for tip funding, which they call the constrained program funding sources. And this pathway relies in large measure on funding through federal allocations, state gas tax, and other locally generated fees and revenues. The second model is the proposed Roadworks Program, which adds truck tolling proceeds into the funding mix. That has to obviously clear the legislature before it may become reality, you know, that's, but it is listed in their strategic plan as an alternative funding. Generally eligible projects are, and there's quite a broad range, I'll just list some of them, bike paths, sidewalks, bridge rehabilitation, equality projects, drainage improvements, park and ride lots, highway, intermodal centers, interstate highway improvements, resurfacing of road, corridor studies, intersection improvements, turning lanes, rail improvements, public transit, recreational trails, enhancements, the Safe Routes to Schools Program, and Americans with Disabilities Act improvements. For this version of the tip, recreational trails and safe routes to school are added into the solicitation. Previously, those had been outside, you know, separately solicited for projects, and the Safe Route for Schools Program has not really, to my knowledge, been offered or funded in the last couple of years, anyway. Anyway, the state is seeking comments on the existing tip program, as well as new project proposals from Rhode Island cities and towns and other interested parties. Central to the process is the requirement that cities and towns prioritize projects in the current tip, and include in the 10-year timeframe extending out to federal fiscal '25, as well as the consideration of new projects for inclusion. And tonight's public hearing is intended to formalize our list. Now, under the current tip, there are several projects that we have to prioritize, and, oh, excuse me, of the current, under the current tip, there are, the 2013 through 16, there are 17 projects slated for South Kingstown roads and other infrastructure. Four of them have been completed. One was the ADA project improvements at Dale Carlia for handicapped accessibility, as well as the road diet with the turning lanes. Also, the intersection improvements on Main Street at Columbia Corners and Woodruff Avenue, and also some repaving on Route One near South County Commons. And lastly, also, US Route One at South County Commons, there were some safety improvements. Those have been completed, so those are off the tip at this point. The status report that was provided in your package also projects the start date of various other projects, either within the current tip or beyond the Rhode Island 10-year strategic plan. As an example, the Kingstown Railroad Bridge on Route 138 is now under design and is slated for replacement in 2017. The long-awaited reconstruction of Route 138 from Route Two to 108 is shown in two contracts beginning in 2021 and 2022. And long-awaited is, perhaps understating the long awaiting that's been done, I know personally, I've been on that committee for at least a dozen years, and I think Mr. Schock has been on it probably close to 15. And, anyway, High Street, as was mentioned by Mr. Kapalvo in the last public hearing, is expected to be bid in early '16 with construction to follow. And one of the projects that is shown in the status report is the pavement of Route One between Route 108 and the government center, and that's shown for completion in 2016, and they may have some wrap-up, but they're pretty much done with that at this point. The report also asks that the town provide prioritization of a number of other projects within the current tip. Prioritization may be numeric, with number one being the highest priority, or by category, which, and this is new, actually, either high, medium, or low, and one of the constraints added is that no more than one-third of the projects that we prioritize can be in any of those categories, so you're forced to make some choices. Now, we provided, for the current tip, we provided several projects in terms of a suggested priority consideration. There are three projects at the Kingston Railroad Station under the aegis of the Friends of Kingston Station. They're listed as the Kingston Station Railroad Signal Tower Project, which is suggested as a lower priority. The Kingston Station Museum and Floors, which actually involves a lot of interior work to the station for ADA compliance, general upgrade, improvements to the bathrooms, and the utility of the structure, that is suggested as a medium priority. And lastly, And lastly, there's a specific project for the Railroad Museum for, I guess, displays and interpretive, other features strictly for the museum, which is rated as a lower priority, suggested at this point as a lower priority. We also have a project that the town has been on in the tip for a number of years called the Sawgetucket River Walkway Phase 2, which is on this side of the river, and that has been, as mentioned by the manager in the working session, in the tip for quite a number of years, and the design of that was never finalized or agreed upon locally, and it's languished, and we're suggesting that remain in the tip but be given a low priority in, you know, in the consideration of other aspects that are in the, in the tip, or hope to be in the tip. There's also another project, which is Hazard Elimination South. It's South, it's Kingston Road, Route 108 at Curtis Corner and Sawgetucket Roads, and that would have a number of improvements to improve the safety and functionality of that intersection, and that is suggested as a high priority. It's my understanding that's advanced quite well into design and is probably something that can go out and be under construction relatively soon. And also, under a project that we must rate according to local priority, it's a bike pedestrian, and it's the URI South County Bike Path Connector from the campus to the William C. O'Neill Bicycle Path, and that's something the council will recall was endorsed by both the Town Council School Committee and the university administration, and that would include a bicycle spur to West Kingston Elementary School. It is hoped that this project could move in the tip from study and development to the development of final design and specifications to move forward, and it is suggested that that have a priority of high. In addition to those projects, which I've just mentioned, the projects listed on the attached, and I believe it's an exhibit to the agenda tonight, project prioritization cover sheet require the assignment of local priorities as well, and there are 36 projects listed on that, and many are not listed in the existing tip. A number, a goodly number of these relate to bridge maintenance and repair, which, as mentioned, is a principal focus of the state's asset management philosophy. Staff has worked with the Department of Public Services, as well as discussions with our members of our Traffic and Transportation Review Committee in terms of the suggested priority rankings based on local needs, and, I mean, could answer questions if they are particular on those. Many of those, I think, we tried to think about things that related to safety or having the largest impact, or projects that have had a long developmental shelf life, and that we'd like to see proceed in terms of suggested rankings, again, within the constraint of one-third, the constraint of one-third, one-third, and one-third. We also offer for consideration four new projects. I'd like to just take a moment to mention those, and then I'll give my voice a rest, which I think everyone will appreciate. The first of which is under the Traffic Safety Program, Route 108 Kingston Road Sidewalk Installation Drainage Improvements. This is a project that would essentially provide sidewalks on Route 108 Kingston Road from the Meadowbrook Housing Complex northerly through Curtis Corner, and then on the east side of the road, and then transition to the west side all the way to Kingston. That's about 1.8 miles of sidewalks, and we estimate the cost to be about a million and a half plus or minus. The project would include new sidewalks, drainage improvements, and the addition of landscaping. This road is heavily traveled as a main transit route to the university, both by private vehicles and via Ripton's Route 66. Pedestrian and bicyclists use this road on a more frequent basis, and there have been a number of, in the last 15 years or so, housing developments which feed into that, and the current configuration of roadway does not provide for safe or convenient multimodal usage, particularly from the point of view of pedestrian or bicyclist. This could be considered a complete streets-type project to provide all people who use the corridor opportunity and options for travel, either for recreation or for, you know, employment or whatever purposes they wish, and it would, you know, hopefully improve safety, mobility, environmental, and aesthetic conditions, and the drainage aspect may actually be assistive of flood control based on Kingston Hill draining down towards Peace Dale. You know, I mentioned earlier that there's more elevation there than most would think because it's gradual in character. A second project is the Broad Rock Playfields, South County Commons Bicycle Spur, and this would involve the construction of about 0.6 linear miles of bicycle path connected from the Broad Rock Playfields to the Commons within the Route 1 Special Management District. A portion of the project would be on privately-owned property, but the property owner has indicated he would agree to apply the town with any and all easement rights necessary to complete the path. This would provide a scenic pedestrian access from South County Commons to Broad Rock Playfields, the Dog Park, the Y, Senior Center, Old Mountain Field, and the town's Planned Recreation Center. It's a project that was contemplated in the town's Greenways Master Plan, and it would, you know, be a nice complement and kind of finishing improvement for this area. It would be developed along an existing sewer line easement between the present Old Mountain Field Bike Path to the South County Commons. It has been completed in terms of design. We did have a grant several years ago through Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, but that wasn't sufficient in terms of funding to cover the costs of it. And I believe we still have in place wetlands permits, which are still valid, and so it's shovel-ready, so to speak, and the project design cost estimate is about $625,000, and we're suggesting that have a high priority. The clerk mentioned this was supported by a local resident who uses it for transportation purposes. It's a serviceable walking path at present, a little rough side and a little steep at one end, but, and the easterly end, but it's a really pretty spot that gets quite a bit of somewhat informal use at this point in time. And there are two other projects I'd like to just quickly mention. Traffic Safety Program at Route 138 at Broad Rock Road and Stony Fort Road, and this would be intersection safety improvements. These would be various improvements to that intersection, which is somewhat accident-prone. There have been 22 accidents at that location between 2009 and 2013. Improvements that would be considered would be realignment of the intersection, traffic control signal, signage, striping, and guardrail work. This project was recommended by a recently completed road safety assessment that was conducted by VHB on behalf of the town and RIDOT, and that is about a $600,000 project at that location. Suggested priority for that is high. And the last new project that we're taking, would suggest taking a look at, it would be a transportation alternative project, the Kingston Station and Vicinity Connectivity Corridor Study, and this project would be a study to analyze existing conditions and corridor improvements to improve the connectivity of Kingston Station to the surrounding vicinity. The current infrastructure and transportation services that service the train station tend to lack coordination and integration to efficiently and conveniently accommodate users, and several of which are very significant employment centers. The study would look at connections to the William C. O'Neill Bike Path, the West Kingston Village itself, Route 138 across the Kingston Railroad Bridge, and the West Kingston, West Kingston industrial area. One of the things that we'd like to have a look at would be a review of potential sidewalks, parking, and landscape improvements on Fairgrounds Road, and a possible direct walking connection westerly from the station to Fairgrounds. This type of connection would necessitate easement consideration or perhaps land acquisition, but a lot of the industrial area is somewhat disconnected, in particular, and, you know, some of those employment centers do a lot of training and have people access the area to Kingston Station, and it's difficult to get the last leg of the trip, so to speak. This is also supported by the town's recently completed West Kingston Village Plan Final Report, and a study of this sort would be kind of a, you know, a generalized review that would, I guess, identify other improvements that may be warranted or for consideration, and we're estimating that would be about a relatively less costly item at about $40,000. We are hoping for two outcomes from tonight's meeting. One, that we'd have the priority listing and the authorization of town staff to prepare our tip submittal to the state, which is due on January 8th by 3:00 p.m. in Providence. And secondly, we'd ask the council's consideration of a motion to authorize the manager to direct the preparation of a joint communication with the URI recommending that the 138 reconstruction project be expedited and advanced in the tip schedule to commence as soon as possible. We feel that, that local push and that cooperative letter from the university, which was, and this was discussed at the town gown meeting a few weeks ago, would, you know, perhaps help get this long-delayed project moving as, you know, the condition of the infrastructure is not, you know, not holding up, so. 21 and 22 seems a long way off, given the condition of the road in that vicinity, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, or sit back and let others comment on what we've thought, but.
Any questions for Vin?
I had a quick question. With the new procedure that they have with the four years and the 10-year outlook, when would we have an opportunity to reprioritize these again?
I think they're talking about taking another, it's going to be a yearly look about and making amendments, but I think this federal, the way it's set up federally, it's not let, every four years you put a new tip together, but you do have the ability to amend it.
Okay.
And that does happen. In fact, I sit on the State Planning Council for the last several years, and four or five times a year, you'll see requests to amend based, based on changed conditions, funding availability, and what have you, but it's not, it's not, it's more fluid than static and, but, so I suppose that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment. We've discussed this in work sessions, we've discussed this in prior town council meetings in the past couple of years, and I particularly am very appreciative to see that you've moved some of the things that have not been put on the table to a high priority for the town because as we become even more healthy, or not necessarily healthy places by design, but people are using bike paths, they are walking, they are making healthy choices, and so, especially now that the Commons and the rec center is going to become part of fruition and accessibility to the university, I think it's a very important thing for our town.
I would agree. And I think the federal philosophy is more pushing towards trying to make streets, complete streets, where, you know, not just completely auto-centric, obviously automobiles are the principal user, but it should be, other classes of use should have some equivalency of access to funding, so I think suggesting those kinds of activities may gain favorable consideration, you know, may, I mean. I would mention that on January the 14th, the state's Transportation Advisory Committee will be holding a hearing here at the town hall at 6:00 p.m. to, when they're going to be vetting the various proposals that are becoming forward. And I guess the last thing I would offer is, this process is somewhat truncated, and in the past, we've had a longer timeframe for consideration. This was kind of bang, bang this time around. I think the last time we had a few months to, you know, wrestle with it, but at this point, we had a fairly quick process that was required to move it, so.
Other, did you have something? Great, then at this point, we'll have comments from the public.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Frank Hepner. I'm the retired chairman of the Board Directors of the Friends of the Kingston Station. Some of you may not be familiar with this group, but in its 40 years of existence, the members of the group have donated approximately 10,000 hours of volunteer time to the restoration and maintenance of Kingston Station, and you can see the results simply by driving up to it and see the beautiful state of restoration the exterior is in, and functionally, try to find a parking space if you're trying to catch a train, that's some evidence of how successful it is as a transportation hub. I'd like to speak to three of these proposed projects, the Kingston Station Tower, what's called here, the Museum and Floors, and finally, the Museum Project. Those names now are a little misleading, and I'd like to try to clarify for you what they actually imply. All three of these projects have been before this body before and approved. They then went to the State Department of Transportation where they were approved. However, they remained within the confines of Rhode Island Department of Transportation for so long that the original funding programs that they were funded under have expired, and that's why we're here again, because we have to resubmit. Now, one of these projects is very easy to discuss, the Tower Project. That was the first one that was submitted in 2002. This is 17 years ago. The tower, regardless of what the original intent was, the tower is now in such a state of physical disrepair that it almost doesn't matter what is proposed to do, that it would be prohibitively expensive. So we have no quarrel with a low priority. If there was even a category very low or negative, we might be willing to go along with that. The other two, the, what's called the Museum and Floors and Museum Project, are the result of two separate proposals that were made over the years, and we thought were going to be enacted in the mid-'90s to the early 2000s. One was to upgrade the then railroad museum of Rhode Island, which was in half of the station, to upgrade that to a regional educational and tourist facility, and the original amount in that proposal was $230,000. In a separate proposal, response to a separate proposal, we proposed major maintenance for the interior of the station to the amount of $100,000. This would include floors, redoing the bathrooms, and so forth. Well, about five years ago, the Department of Transportation decided that it wanted to try to lease the entire station to Amtrak, and it would be much simpler for them if there were no railroad museum in the station. So we were directed to shut down our operations, pack up our things, and move out, which we did. However, there was a question of what was going to happen to all the funds that were, had been allocated for the museum. RIDOT asked us if we would be willing to transfer the bulk of those funds over to interior improvements, and after a long series of discussions, we agreed to do that. What was left over was a sum that, since there was no more museum, it was called interpretive displays, and what this essentially meant was that there would be display cases, there would be wall posters and so forth, that would give visitors some idea of what the history of the station was and the history of roads in Rhode Island. That process got started, the state hired a consultant, this, excuse me, it's late, the consultant hired other consultants to develop a plan for what these educational displays should be. It stalled out at that point, and where we are now is that the Friends of the Kingston Station has very little to do with the station anymore, and there is no other likely source of funding for these badly needed interior improvements. When I say badly needed, those of you who've been to Kingston Station and used the bathrooms could readily testify that they are badly in need of an upgrade. The floors are worn down to bare wood, there are all sorts of other things that need to be done. So we would like to urge that the priority for what's called the Museum and Floors Project should be reentitled Interior Work, and that should receive a high priority because the interior should match the exterior. The exterior is first-class, world-class, you walk through the door, and it's a dump. There's a consonant dissonance there. And given that about 160,000 passengers a year now use that station, it truly is the gateway to South County. And what we've been seeing is that the, let's say, the economic status of the passenger, typical passenger coming up from New York has been going up. We're seeing more and more limousines meeting the train to take people over to Newport and so forth. So there needs to be some consonance between the interior and the exterior, so that people's first impression is maintained. Now, as far as, excuse me, what should be the museum displays, all we're asking for at this point is that enough be allocated to be sure that those displays, the railroad dioramas for the kids and so forth, that there be something there in the station. Because the alternative is that we'll probably just have to junk all the stuff that we used to have in the museum. There's no other alternative for it to go. That would be a real shame, because some of it is historically significant. So we would like to suggest that the floor project be declared a high priority and that the railroad museum project be declared a medium priority. And if you need to really take something off the other side, just declare that the Tower Project is a non-starter. So that's what our request is. Any questions?
You said there's funds available for the Museum and Floors Project, or?
Well, the question is, are there funds available for this? There had been funds under the old enhancement program. And our understanding is that some of those funds are going to be transferred to the new arrangement. You'd really have to talk to RIDOT about that. But as part of the tip, there are federal funds available. So most of the money would come from that source, just as it would have with the old project. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Representative Carol Hagan-Mackenty, District 33. I represent South Kingstown and Narragansett. I'm here to commend Vin on a great report. I don't think there's much I disagree with here as far as your high priority list. You have 36 projects, you can pick 12 projects to be high priority. I'm here on behalf of my constituents, and I like several of the new projects that were mentioned here. Number one, I agree with Meg Healy. The Bike Path is very important to South Kingstown. And I'm particularly interested in the Broad Rock Playfield South County Commons Bike Spur. I believe that would be great in many ways. Not only an alternate transportation route, also be good for economic development, to get people back and forth from the Commons to Wakefield, movies, restaurants, we know the drill. Anyway, I think it's shovel-ready. We could miss an opportunity here if we don't jump on this one. So I'm in complete agreement to keep it on the high priority list, along with the Bike Path Connection at URI. The second one that I have heard about, and all of these I've heard about many, for many years on the town council, and I continue to hear about it now that I'm at the State House, but the traffic safety program for Route 138, Mossfield Road at Broad Rock and Stony Fort, anybody who travels that road and wants to cut across to Stony Fort from Broad Rock or vice versa, you really are taking your life in your hands many times. And the traffic is very fast, people coming and going to URI. So I think we need to take a real close look at the safety issues that are presented there. And if we had a traffic light, or if we could straighten out the intersection, because you have to curve around, so you all know, but that's something I'm hearing from my constituents as well. I'm also hearing the need for the sidewalk installation on Route 108 from Meadow Brook all the way down to past Curtis Corner and to all those, the shopping plazas. So that's been, we've talked about that for years. And again, I think that's highly, you know, a lot of traffic, back and forth to URI. And that would be a great project. So with all of that said, and I also think it's high time to get the Route 138 Reconstruction Project up and going. We've been talking about this long before I was sitting on the council, and you guys are still talking about it. So let's get it moving, and I appreciate the hard work you're doing. And thank you, Steve, for great recommendations. And I can't disagree. So hopefully you'll consider all of the great recommendations that were made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenny Burke again. I'm here with Jen Judds. We're representing the Healthy Places by Design Bike and Walk Committee. And to echo Representative's comments, you know, we do appreciate the staff's time ever put into this. As a matter of record, we just wanted to kind of quickly go through some priorities that we had identified. And I know that this is a compressed timeframe as far as getting the state input for councils and then the council getting public input. Very quickly, the URI South County Bike Path Connector, again, we do support that. I would encourage you, however, when you write this application up, to consider perhaps phasing that project. It seems to be very within grasp to get the connection from the Bike Path through URI's property and perhaps right out to 138. The rest of the work within the university campus, I'm not sure where they're at with that project yet. We had heard again from Mr. Capalbo that High Street Project is going forward. There is a handicap access project on 108, which I believe has already been mentioned and supported by the town, so we, again, support that. The Route 138 Reconstruction Project, I think everybody's in agreement, it's way long overdue. I know there's other utility work that's been delayed for quite some time, just to wait for DOT to get caught up with that project. So we are happy to see the town endorse that. There's been talk about what's happening on Route 108 from Sweet Meadows up to Curtis Corner and Saga Tucket. This group had actually looked at the entire corridor going up to 138. So it may be outside of the scope of the willingness of DOT to consider something that far up, but there are a lot of pedestrians and bikes up and down that corridor for your consideration. We'd also heard that the new Federal Highway Administration Funding Program has been passed, and it's a little bit bigger than they had expected. So with that, I encourage the council to go back and communicate, or actually through staff, with DOT to get clarification on where those additional funds may be allocated if Rhode Island were to get a proportionally higher share. There's the discussion about the Kingston Station Commuter Rail Project. Again, we support looking at that in terms of the Village Center in West Kingston, getting greater connectivity throughout the town. And lastly, the funding for the Bike Path, connecting South County Commons through, to the Broad Rock area. And if I could quickly make some comments on Mr. Murray's very thorough assessment. Mr. Murray makes mention of DOT's philosophy on asset management. So considering that this is a transportation improvement plan, I think that takes priority. There's a tremendous opportunity to weave in bikeable, walkable community themes into anything that is aligned with DOT's natural tendency to basically get concrete and asphalt projects out the door as quickly as possible. It's interesting, the write-up from the town includes significant discussions regarding DOT's aspirations for bikeable, walkable committee communities. Councilman Healy had mentioned this earlier, and Representative Hagan-Mackenty had also mentioned that. So again, I think there's an alignment of opportunity if the council really pushes these themes throughout their applications. And again, I know most of you are familiar about the Healthy Places by Design Group, but I'm not sure if you're aware of a recent award that we received. Jen, did you want to mention that?
I just wanted to share, I'm very excited to let you know that of the three and a half years, or four years even, that I've been part of that, along with many, many others. I recently attended the American Planning Association Holiday Party and Award Ceremony, and the Healthy Places by Design Group won an award for Outstanding Plan Implementation. It was granted to the South Kingstown Bike-Walk Subcommittee and Citizens of South Kingstown Committees for Health, to help through strategic action. So very proud to share. And I just really can't help you enough for asking for your consideration in regards to the, especially the Bike Spur, that's one of our top priorities. But also on a side note, can you have any other? On a side note, I recently submitted to Dave Capalbo at Rhode Island DOT, a concept on Kingstown, along Kingstown Road at the curve where Railroad and where the South County Bike Path crosses. It's a very dangerous intersection. Students, residents, everybody who uses, all users, who drive around that corner, they go very fast. So my recommendation as a landscape architect was to actually try and close that gap with a complete streets design intent. And I narrowed that curve by narrowing the vehicular lanes, and I made some suggestions to push the curbs closer to the center line. And also with that suggestion, provided some recommendations for green space. I just submitted this to them last week, and they probably haven't even really had a chance to review it thoroughly, but I just thought I'd share in trying to make a change for that intersection since it is so dangerous.
And if I could, just one more comment on the Bike Path Spur up to South County Commons. As you had mentioned earlier, this is pretty much shovel-ready. The town did a lot of great legwork to get this permitted. I'd actually suggested, actually, I sat on the TAC many years ago, and I went through the process of reviewing applications. You might want to consider working with town staff to assess if it makes sense to put a kicker in. If the DOT is looking for incentives, a strong commitment from the town, perhaps up to a 10% match, it could be upwards of $62,500, to ensure that this gets prioritized very, very high through the TAC, so it does actually get implemented. Again, it's a great opportunity for the town. Town staff has laid this project out, they've designed it, they've permitted it, they've got concurrence with the private property owners of the Commons. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the town as they're considering investing in the recreation center to make sure that this is an integral part of that decision.
Many people at the South County Commons have also made comments through Healthy Places in a positive way, and are strongly recommending that as well in conversations that we've had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your award. Jim O'Neil, Matunik. Great list. I've seen this list over multiple decades, especially High Street. Route 138 will probably be with us forever, but we'll see what happens. Couple things here. On the first page of the exhibit, "Resurfacing US-1 Commonwealth Perry Highway 550 feet east of the Charleston Town Line." I live across from Succotash Road, I'm about three miles from the Charleston Town Line, so I'm guessing that meant to be 15,500 feet from the Town Line. I'm not sure if that was the issue, but that highway is a 1955 highway, and I think, without even asking Chief Espia, it is one of the most dangerous roads, 60 years old. Those J-curves, the number of deaths that we've had in that highway are overwhelming. Charleston, as you may know, for those that travel down there, have put in four lights, and they've tried to time it to try to keep traffic, you know, under 55, 60 miles an hour. We don't have that on Route 1 when Charleston comes into South Kingstown. And the J-curves, believe me, I lived there, there isn't a day that goes by that I don't have broken plastic hubcaps, whatnot, in my driveway. It is incredible, because on the J-curve, you force the high-speed lane person to force the pass, the travel lane person over to the breakdown lane. It's incredibly dangerous on so many spots. And now, of all the things we don't need on Route 1, I don't need to know every two-tenths of a mile where I stand. I've never seen such pollution in my life being put up. I understand the safety lights in the road. I don't need a green light telling me there's a guardrail coming up and a red light to tell me when it ends, or the mileage things. I think we could have had a lot more money there to spend on other important safety functions. It's a great list. And Frank Hepner, who is here, the Kingston Station is something we should be incredibly proud of. And I really wish, you know, that we could find the money on that and put that on a very high priority list. And maybe the Federal Train Group can help with that. But that's something needs to be done, because that is a showpiece when you come from business travel or recreation travel by rail. What a great place to be dropped off or to leave from. Couple other things here. We talked about the Bike Spur up to South County Commons, and that's probably the best investment that the town ever made back in early 2010. I remember Steve Alfred coming to the town council with the, an offer he wanted to make to the diocese for the Dominic de Savio Centaur. And the collective comments on the council, I know Mr. Mackenty was there, and we said, what's taking us so long? Get that property. And by the time we were done with the six, $7,000 purchase, Steve had it narrowed down to about a zero cost for us. Then all the hard work to get this thing shovel-ready, and then, of course, getting the owners of the South County Commons onboard. This is a great investment, and this is an area that is going to be the central campus, if you will, of South Kingstown in the future. Schools, playfields, you name it, dogs, seniors, not necessarily in that order, but gives you an idea. But that, we really need to move on quickly. We don't want to lose that. And it's also too great for business and great for healthy people. And I've heard a lot tonight about Healthy Places by Design. And I'll give a lot of credit to Vin Murray's office, Doug McLean, early on, Representative Mackenty, myself, we knew the value of that, we knew what to do with the grant. So we went after that early on, four or five years ago, because our town was thinking that way with the potential center, athletic center, what we've done with our beaches, what we've done with the Bike Path. This is a community that over the last decade has pursued Healthy Places by Design, sometimes indirectly too, but very, very important. Couple other things. On the Route 108, I brought up it, when I was on the council, probably year after year, how dangerous I thought Route 138 was going to be, especially by Farmer's Daughter. I don't care if you leave Route 1, coming down that hill, you build up speed. You leave URI, head east coming down that hill, you build up speed. And you have really no breakdown lane across from Farmer's Daughter. And Farmer's Daughter now is doing a huge amount of business, and they're also doing weddings, et cetera. And what Rep. Mackenty brought up was that Four Corners, which is not a Four Corners, Broad Rock is not directly across from Stony Fort. And that's where the curve is, speeds, it's so, it's so dangerous, that has to be, it's safe to here, we have a lot of projects we'd love to have. But at those speeds, that's got to be at your very highest of priorities. And just a couple more thoughts here. Let's see. I certainly know this past year, even I got calls on Kingstown Road across from the police station, going up there, you actually had growth along the sidewalk, excuse me, along the road there that was growing into the road. You see they're putting in gas lines now, it was incredible, just how dangerous it was at that time. So that really sidewalks are probably going to be very important there, especially as you get up towards north ups and beyond there. And let's see, I think that's probably all I'm going to talk about tonight. So priorities, again, the Bike Spur, and for safety purposes, I really hope that you pay attention to that intersection, 108, Broad Rock and Stony Fort. Thank you.
Just for clarification on the Route 1 resurfacing there, I read that as, the resurfacing starts 550 feet east of the Town Line and then proceeds over to Succotash. Is that, okay?
You read right off. It's 550, 550 feet east of Charleston Town Line, and then it's one east of the, until you get to Succotash Road. to Succotash Road.
Other comments from the public? Very good. I agree with the commentary that it's a good priority list. Reflects a lot of the work that Healthy Places by Design has done, so thank you, folks. With that, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I make a motion, we close, close the public hearing.
Second.
So, moved. Any further commentary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Motion to approve this priority list.
I make a motion to approve item 7D at the, oh, yes. I gotta find it.
Page 5.
I make a motion to approve the town's recommendations and local priority assignments and authorize the submittal of the same to the State Planning Council for consideration in the development of the Rhode Island Transportation Improvement Program for federal fiscal years 2017 to 2025 as presented. In addition, the council urges the SPC to include positive consideration of proposals for projects by Friends of Kingston Station and the University of Rhode Island.
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And there's a second motion that was...
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to prepare a joint communication with the University of Rhode Island Administration. Strongly recommended that the Route 138 reconstruction project be expedited to and advanced in the TIP schedule to commence as soon as possible. Such correspondence is necessitated as the projected schedule for this long-delayed and necessary project is not consistent with our community needs and the continuing deteriorating condition of the state highway segment.
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to the end of our public hearings. We're now to item 8 on the agenda, which is communications. Letter A is resolutions adopted November 10, 2015 by the South Kingston School Committee relative to early college dual and concurrent enrollment regulation and concerning group home aid. They've been received and placed on file. And Jonathan, I see you out there in the audience. Do you want to talk about these? No? Okay. What do we want to do with them?
I don't think the, the correspondents asked us to make any action with this, so if we could just place it on file, maybe talk to them about it when we have our work session.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Letter B is a communication dated November 24, 2015 from James Weinrich, submitting his resignation from the Sagatucket Veterans Memorial Committee. It's been received and placed on file. And I believe we wanted to...
I think I'd like to make a motion to accept his resignation and have Dale send a letter of thanks to Jim for his service on that committee. I know the Sagatucket Veterans Memorial Committee has been working very hard to get all the names of our servicemen and women up to date on that. It's about 10 years behind, so we're really looking forward to getting that up to date and appreciate his, his commitment to that.
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Letter C, a communication dated November 5, 2015 from Representative Brian Newberry, House Minority Leader, concerning the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Housing, there's a word missing, Urban Developments affirmatively furthering fair housing rule. It's been received and placed on file. What are we going to do with it?
I'll make a motion to place the communication on file.
Second.
Just...
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Make a comment that, we, I mean, we discussed this back in February and this roadmap Rhode Island thing is more confusing now, I think, or there's no clarification. So, I appreciate the correspondence and the follow-up correspondence that was included.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item E is communications from Cindy Almonte.
Can you skip Dave?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Letter D, a communication dated December 3, 2015 from James Sheehy, Assistant Scout Master of Troop 1 Kingston, requesting letters of commendation for Max David Hempe and Timothy Nelson Sheehy for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and inviting council members to attend their Eagle Court of Honor on December 27, 2015. And we've received that, placed it on file.
I would recommend that, and I would ask that Dale prepare those two proclamations for each of the youth obtaining their Eagle Scouts. I, I will certainly, this one is kind of personal, but I, to me, I will certainly be there on December 27.
Do you want my response, whether you want to invite her to Jane?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Now to letter E. Communications from Cindy Almonte, Janet Bertwell, Steve Bertwell, Tim Gray, Amy Janes, Craig McConnell, Pamela Sheehan, and James Walsh concerning snow removal from sidewalks and roadways in the town's business districts. And they've been received. What do we want to do with it?
I'd like to make a motion to just place it on file. I know we will be discussing the snow removal issue during our budget season.
Your work session is...
Our work session.
Is there any use to sending it to...
No, I think that the full discussion that we had last week, I'm not sure what else I can add to the, to the subject at this point.
Okay. Great. There was a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. All right. And that brings us to item 9 on our agenda. I know people have been very patient tonight, so thank you for bearing with us. It's been a long agenda. But this is comments from interested citizens and this is your opportunity to come up to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and tell us what we can be doing better or whatever's on your mind. And yeah, go for it.
Good evening. My name is Callie Babett Spears. I'm a single mom of six. I currently reside in the Champagne Heights housing complex. I'm, I am speaking here tonight on behalf of not only my family, but all the families of Champagne Heights and Fornier Estates who are currently struggling to make ends meet while raising our families in healthy and happy home. Over the course of the year, residents of both housing units have come together to revitalize the neighborhood and build a community that our children are proud to be a part of, helping one another succeed and grow. This summer, we planted over 100 flowers, plants, and bushes, creating gardens outside of each tenant's home, teaching the younger members of our community what it means to be responsible for caring and nurturing with the world around us. Among many systemic obstacles, the one I am here to speak about tonight is our families' access to washer and dryers. As a community, we have been told for multiple reasons ranging from plumbing to electric that we cannot have washer and dryers within our apartments unless the tenants are grandfathered in. The hookups are still visible and accessible, but prohibited for use. Our community consists of primarily single-parent homes with three or more children. Most of us work and go to school during the week and on the weekends, which does not afford us the opportunity or leisure to access laundromat facilities when they are open. Transportation to the laundromat is also a struggle as we do not live on the bus route. Although we have been offered limited transportation to the facilities from the Housing Authority, the times offered are often when we are working or unavailable during daytime hours. There are families with children who have disabilities and suffer from incontinence. These families require access to sanitary washing facilities within their home based on documentation specifically from doctors and medical professionals. However, these notes have not been taken into account. Many times since beginning of the movement, we have been compared to Champagne Heights and Fornier Estates of 10 to 20 years ago. But now, we are a new generation of tenants who want to see positive change within our community. We want to be active participants in the greater South Kingston community, participating and volunteering in local family events like the Peacedale Neighborhood Holiday Stroll. We want to beautify our community by planting gardens and trees. We are trying to form a tenants' association to help and support one another and our children. We want to work with the South Kingston Housing Authority to improve our quality of living and we would like the support and efforts to do so. Our attempts to address the concerns of our living conditions with the South Kingston Housing Authority have fallen on deaf ears. The tenants of Champagne Heights and Fornier Estates are requesting that the council help mediate a session between community members and the Housing Authority in which concerns may be addressed and productive change may occur. We believe it is for the best interest of all South Kingston families that this mediation occurs. Thank you so much this evening. And also, there are other people that are in support and also have comments.
I'm Therese Martin, President of the Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization. When PDNRI, I am, I am looking to follow up Callie's comments. When PDNRI learned that the South Kingston Housing Authority residents were working to reform a tenants' association, we were thrilled. In past years, the tenants were organized and they worked regularly with PDNRI to host neighborhood events and to engage their children in meaningful, rewarding community work. PDNRI's initial contacts with these newly organizing residents sparked a surge of fresh ideas and hopeful collaborations with that group. After talking with several of the residents recently, I've learned that there is a more somber motivation for organizing as tenants. While the tenants that I've spoken with, which would probably number around 20, have almost universally expressed profound gratitude for their housing, there does seem to be significant frustration expressed with what I perceive to be inconsistent communication between the Housing Authority Board, the Executive Director, and the tenants. I personally tried to reach out to the Executive Director two weeks ago via email, offering assistance and collaboration via PDNRI, and I have not received a reply. Tenants seem to be concerned that they have no real say in which issues the Housing Authority Board may address and which issues are not deemed worthy of discussion, and say that they often feel blindsided by changes made to their physical environment, such as the removal of nearly all the trees from the grounds of the Champagne Heights neighborhood. It is my feeling, after speaking with maybe two dozen tenants, that, that they, they feel disenfranchised in, within their own community. And it was, I'm perceiving a really disappointing sort of us versus them culture brewing. I don't know if this, how, how long this feeling has been there, but I've spent several weeks going to their meetings as they try to organize and several members of that community have come to PDNRI meetings and volunteered at the tree lighting. It is also my belief that these tenants genuinely desire to be included in the conversations and the decision-making that affects their day-to-day lives, but the means available to them for inclusion are not clearly established. PDNRI is in support of the Housing Authority tenants organizing a tenants' association and offer them our assistance. Additionally, in accordance with state law, the Town Council had previously established a Board of Tenants Affairs for SK Housing Authority residents, a board which is currently inactive. According to the town's website, the purpose and powers of this board would include advising the Housing Authority on matters concerning the welfare of the tenants, reviewing rules of the Housing Authority, and meeting with appropriate agencies to assist in developing legislation and alleviate the problems of the tenants. PDNRI is also in support of the reformation of this Board of Tenants Affairs, which we believe to have been established as the official means by which the tenants may be empowered to voice their collective concerns and play an active role in the management of their neighborhoods. I am here today to ask this Town Council to also make a commitment to assist these residents of the Housing Authority in the reformation of a Board of Tenants Affairs. I had not heard of this board until just a few days ago. I thought that a tenants' association might serve this role, but I find that this, this tenants' Board of Affairs, I think, is the real solution to sort of checks and balances and to give official power to these residents to advocate for themselves and to prioritize their needs. I don't know when this establishment of this board was made. It only makes reference to residents of Fornier and Champagne. I don't know if this predates Meadowbrook or whatnot, or if it was simply just meant to cover these two neighborhoods. It's listed on the website for the town as an eight-member board, two-year terms, four tenant representatives, two from Fornier, two from Champagne, and four town residents appointed by the Town Council. I don't know if that would need modification or if, if there are any further questions or if anyone has any objections.
I think, just to clarify, I spoke to Steve about this in the work session, the tenants' association and this board are exactly the same thing.
I'm sorry?
Is that right? The Board of, what's the official name?
Tenant Board of Affairs.
Right. Is the same as the tenants' association.
Yes.
I think it could be, but not necessarily.
There was a tenant, under state law, there's a requirement for a tenant Board of Affairs that would have legal standing as far as HUD in terms of dealing with the Housing Authority or HUD representatives. That, I believe that's the one that you're talking about.
That is what I'm talking about, but I do believe there, in the past, was also a separate tenants' association. It was a little less formally established and it was not a town board. It was independent of the town.
Any group can come together as a, as a group if they want to be represented in that way, but the point that I think that the council president was making is that if there's going to be a formal group, it needs to go through the process of the elections of the various members. And it would be representative of both of the family housing complexes as well as senior housing complex.
Okay. This is the discussion we're looking to open. And I know that the whole discussion doesn't have to happen here tonight, but if the Town Council would commit to further discussion, I think that would be a good first step.
Sure. So, my understanding from the conversations we had earlier tonight was, sure, the first step is getting elected representatives from the housing...
What I would, what I would say is I would ask the... What I would say is I would ask the Chair of the Housing Authority to provide me with the specific requirements on how the elections need to be conducted and the appointments made through the council for the formal board. I would then share that information with the council. In conversation with the chairperson, I don't think that there's any objection for that Housing Authority to work with the group to be able to develop that board. So, and I'm sure we'll hear from her before the evening's over.
Great. I think I'm certainly open to this conversation happening. If there's other comments from the public.
Thank you.
My name's Shannon Tyler. I'm also a resident in South Kingston at the Fournier Estates. I'm a long-term resident there, so as a tenant, like, I just want to say that it's been a lifeline to have housing. I don't want in any way, shape, or form, like, for anybody to think that, because it is, especially with funding, I don't know what, I can even begin to admit that I understand any of that with funding, or what goes into that as far as what can and cannot be done. So, as a tenant, I do want to say I feel that it has been a lifeline. I don't personally feel there's anybody to necessarily point fingers at, or, you know, or be angry with as far as not having things or not getting things. I do believe there could, of course, there could be better communication, and anything could be bettered, but I also think that it would be great if us as the tenants could all get together and maybe even have things that are with the town, things that we don't know about, maybe that we're not educated about as far as being able to help with the building and constructing and things like that, because I do believe there's probably not enough funding to do some of the things that we want to do. So, I just want to state that I do feel that when we did bring it to their attention, we were spoken with, I just don't think that we got the outcome we wanted at the time, but I do feel that way, and I'm very grateful to be able to have housing as far as, I know there's a lot of people that struggle without it, and I do know that having that's a luxury, not a requirement, so.
Thank you.
Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
I just wanted to be sure all the tenants and tenants.
Could you come up to the, okay.
I just wanted to make sure everything's first.
I'm not at all organized, I'm sorry. I have a big scribble mess here in front of me, but I'm going to try to get through it. Hi, everyone. My name's Cheryl Woodmansey. I'm an almost lifelong resident of South Kingston. I'm married, a mother of four, all who I raised at South Kingston. I have one still in high school, gone soon, I'm sure. I recently have been enjoying all the festivities that have been taking place down in Peastale. The summer block party was a blast, both of the tree lightings this year and last year, even though it rained last year, was still really, really nice to see. It's just really nice, all the new life and energy that's being poured into what I feel has been a neglected area. It's becoming a very charming area with the bike path running through it, the different-colored buildings, I love that, the old mill, all these things add to the charm. I am a real estate agent, and I was part of the sales team that sold Brook Edge Village condominiums over there, which was really nice to see that building getting filled up. They're getting filled up with wonderful people and people who are really actively getting involved with all the cleaning up of Peastale and the restoring it to her former glory. A big part of that, or this, has been the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization Incorporated Group. It all excited me so much that I went to one of the meetings. During the meeting, I ended up at one point with tears in my eyes. I was being told about Champaign Heights and the denial that the tenants' association got to do their own tree lighting, I'm sorry. The tree was being donated by Stuart's Nursery, so there was no cost to the housing development to HUD or anybody. Stuart's Nursery had also volunteered to do the digging, to do the planting, and the tenants received offers for lights, and were going to have crafts with the kids to put ornaments on the tree, and it broke my heart that they were denied. I was told the Executive Director and that the South Kingston Housing Authority said it wasn't timely. I'm not sure what that meant. As I continued to ask questions, I was told I could go to one of the tenants' meetings the next night because a representative from the South Kingston Housing Authority would be there, and we could get some answers. I went to the meeting, I was on time, I want it known, on public record, I was on time. I'm never on time for anything. And it was clear, listening to the exchange between him and the tenants, that there was a big lapse in communication. He left giving no real explanation for almost anything. I've also been told about the phasing out of the washers and dryers. Again, it seems a lack of communication as to why, you know, they've been told numerous things from what I'm hearing. Just a couple of quick stats for you guys and for the town. The average annual income for public housing residents is eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. That comes from the website of, I forget if it was You Guys or HUD, it was one of the two. That's eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five. Forty-five percent of these households include children. Eighty-seven percent have disabled people in them. They all pay, all of them, pay thirty percent of their income towards rent, which is pretty common. It's close to what a normal mortgage would be for anybody who was to apply for a mortgage. So that's thirty percent of eighteen thousand dollars approximately. That's fifty-four hundred dollars, he is included. That leaves twelve thousand six hundred dollars for food, for cable and internet. Eighty dollars is given to the tenants towards electricity. This is all from stuff I'm hearing. That's for a year. They have to also put in your car insurance, if you're lucky enough to have a car, clothing, et cetera. So out of that, twelve thousand six hundred dollars now comes laundry. I went door to door Saturday to ask the residents of Champaign Heights how they felt about life there. Every door I knocked on was opened by a kind, courteous, and friendly individual. Some of them let me into their homes. Kids were sitting at tables doing homework, some were doing crafts and eating snacks. This is the life they fight for, for their children. No washer and dryer means, according to the residents, fifty to a hundred and sixty dollars a week. That's two thousand six hundred dollars to eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars out of twelve thousand and six hundred dollars a year. That leaves them with between ten thousand and forty-two hundred dollars to take care of their family. I'd like any of us to do that. That means washing and drying in tubs at home. That means if you don't have a car to get to the laundromat, find a ride or walk with your laundry and probably your kids almost three miles to the nearest laundromat on High Street. Something needs to be done. I want to go through, I won't go through, the leaks, the peeling paint, the third floors with no heat, windows that don't lock, and the additional laundry list of items that are going wrong in our town's public housing. These people are not looking for a handout. They want to better their lives, but how can one do that under these current conditions? All to do, I forgot where I am now, they have organized, all to do what they can to help make life nicer, especially for the children. It seems to them that their concerns are falling on deaf ears. The Board of Tenants Affairs was established, I believe, for just this problem. It's in the General Laws of Rhode Island Title 452518. It states that four town residents appointed by you, the town council, and four tenant reps, two from each, two from Columbia, two from Fournier Estates, elected by the tenants. This board has the following powers, and I'm actually not going to go over them because she already did. I'm almost done. As for a real estate agent, I can tell you that improving our public housing and its tenants' quality of life has a real domino effect. The area surrounding it starts looking better. Businesses thrive. New businesses come in. Housing values rise. That increases appraisal values of homes, which raises taxes. Going into the town, which gives more money for the town to do other improvements like these great road things you're talking about, the sidewalks, et cetera. It's a win-win-win scenario. Now, I'm not expecting you to fix all these problems. I'm asking for your support and your backup to these tenants and to get them the four residents needed for this board. And the public housing residents will do their own. No, the Peastale housing residents will elect their own four. Will you do this?
Gotcha. Thank you, yes. I think we can make those appointments when the time comes.
I just want to make one more. I'm Mary Ellen Langworthy, and I've had the pleasure of working with the people at Champaign Heights in terms of their gardening projects, and the thing that I heard over and over again was how little power they had in determining what could happen and what couldn't happen in their lives regarding housing, particularly the washing machines. And I think that washing machines are a necessity for families with children, for the elderly, for people with handicaps, for people who have health problems, and I think it's wrong to deny them. I think that lots of things, I think what I heard people say was they were denied because they leak. Washing machines leak, and they make mold, but lots of things in houses and apartments leak. Toilets, bathtubs, kitchen sinks, bathroom sinks, refrigerators, dishwashers, and I don't know how the Housing Authority takes care of that. Seems to me that they could throw in washers and take care of washing machines as well. I think it's shameful in 2015 that we're denying families the use of washers in their apartments, and I just want to give my support to that. Thank you. Actually, and what I really want to say is, is there anything that you can do? So, that's my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm much shorter than everybody else. My name is Maureen Egan. I'm one of the commissioners on the board at the South Kingston Housing, appointed by the council here. I think it's been about five years now that I've been on the board. Not to take your time all evening to go over everything, list by list of what people said, and to agree or disagree with what they said, I'd like to refer you back to the response that the board sent to the council and to the newspaper in response to this issue. The biggest problem we have is that we cannot make decisions alone. They have to be made in conjunction with HUD. We also have to be aware of the local zoning, the fire regulations, and so on. We've had a couple of serious fires at the housing complex, and we're very cautious about such things. In the letter that we sent you, we noticed that the housing project, most of the project was built in the seventies and eighties. Far before, there were computers, microwaves, big, huge fish tanks, multiple phones, all kinds of things draining on the electrical. We only have a basic ampage in the buildings, and we can't put in any more electrical without there being serious concerns that there'll be a safety hazard. It's important to know, when I listen to people say that they don't know what's going on, they haven't been told anything, it's a real problem. By profession, I'm a clinical social worker. I retired from the state of Rhode Island and worked with children for over thirty years, so I'm very aware of the needs of children and families, and it bothers me to hear these things said when they're not always accurate. Some things are exaggerated. Everybody has been told that they have access to a driver and a van to go to the laundromat. Some tenants have taken advantage of that. Every week, they make an appointment and they go to the laundry. I have not heard of any conflicts. If people call, we work out what we can with them. We have talked to HUD. We tried to, at one point, three or four years ago, had talked about tearing down some of the buildings and rebuilding. HUD doesn't want to hear it. HUD only wants us to rehab the buildings. They don't want the buildings torn down. The tenants, we had a very active tenant association a couple of years ago, and the two tenants that were the most active left the complex and everything fell apart. So now we have some new tenants in who are anxious to get that started again, which we firmly support with them, we've told them that. We, you know, we've offered them financial help when we need it, just let us know what we're talking about. One of the commissioners is a tenant himself of the complex, so if no one comes to a meeting, they're also represented by their, one of their own friends and peers. We, I don't know where this started about the washers and dryers taken out because they're leaking. Granted, everybody who owns a washer and dryer knows that that happens at times, and you deal with it, and you clean it up, and you do what you have to do. I wasn't here when those old tenants were there, and maybe they were very neglectful. I don't know. But we had to make the decision, primarily based on the fire standards, that we couldn't have all that electrical ampage pulled from the buildings. And it is important to know that since then, we have put new roofs on the buildings, they've all been painted, they were painted inside and out, so if somebody's having peeling paint, we have a process by which all they have to do is call the maintenance office, the call is logged in and dated and timed, and the maintenance man will go respond to that. If somebody doesn't call us and tell us, we don't know, because we don't go examining their apartments. It's up to them to keep a safety standard in their own apartments. We hear about things later on, that somebody's bathroom didn't work for a couple of years. Well, they didn't tell anybody, so how do we know? So it's as much their responsibility as it is ours, so if we can get things done, they needed to tell us. The situation with the Christmas tree, which, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but we got a note on December 6th, and it was a very curt note, demanding permission to put up a tree. That's what it said. It didn't say that it was a live tree, didn't say it was an artificial tree, didn't say anything. We had none of the details, if it was going to be a live tree, who was supplying it, who was going to maintain it. You know, planting it this time of the year, you know you have to do special treatments and watering and so on to keep it alive. We didn't know any of that. We had no chance to call Dig Safe and make sure it was all right, pick the appropriate place. So that's what we said. This year, we can't go with a live tree, but we'll help you out any way. We offered to buy the artificial tree. We offered to help them any way we could. So when we sit here and fingers get pointed, you know, at how terrible we are and everything, I think it's important for the public to know that it's not always an accurate picture that's being painted. And the person who interviewed twenty clients, well, there's two hundred and forty clients within this complex, so twenty is only a very small percentage of the total number. Tenants are invited to all of our meetings, our board meetings. There's a period of time for any comments, for any discussion. The tenants who were having problems with this, they came to October and November meeting. Then they came in with a couple of advocates and met personally with the Executive Director at least twice, and no one is turning them away. Only thing we're asking is, as a courtesy to anybody who's working, we have a very small office. Right now, Mary Aslan is the only worker in the building, so if somebody comes to the door and demands to meet with them right then, she can't do that. She's trying to answer the phone, get the leases together, get the checks out, and do all that stuff all by herself. So, and then, you know, and some of this is saying, there were some comments made, like things are falling on deaf ears, and it's not true. We talk about these things all the time. We have to develop a five-year plan with HUD as to how monies are going to be spent, and we can only spend the money they give us. We have no extra money. We have no money from the state of Rhode Island, we have no money from the town, we have no money donated, so we have to go by HUD. And if HUD tells us they want us to replace bathrooms... And if HUD tells us they want us to replace bathrooms, which we did, then we have to go with that. It's a very expensive proposition. And some of the tenants here know from our previous discussions that people are not always up to date with their rents and their expenses. Some people get very far behind, and that's money that we could use towards the budget. So when people don't pay, you know, if they could at least come and talk to us and tell us, you know, I'm having a bad time right now, can we work something out? We'd be glad to sit and talk to them. But if you just ignore us and don't pay, we don't know what's going on. So as much as we try to provide privacy and appropriate living arrangements for everybody, it's, you know, it's a two-way street. They've also got to come and tell us what's going on. I thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry I got passionate about it, but I do get upset. As I said, I've worked thirty years with children and families in multiple housing complexes throughout the state. And I know there's an awful lot of people right now trying to get into South County housing because it has one of the best reputations in the state. And I think that we've done a, a good job. Mary Aslan has done an excellent job. The buildings have not looked this good in years. We, you know, still have things we have to do. The outside of the buildings are so old that it won't hold paint anymore, so we have to put shingles on the outside. And, so we try to prioritize things. Anyways, I'm going to sit down, and I, I thank you for listening. But one of the other things I think it's very important to say, and I could get in trouble for this, but I, I think it's important to say, is that while the council appoints members to the board, and the tenants need to hear this, is that the board stands alone. We work with HUD. We appreciate their advocacy and their friends who have come in to help them. But, and we'll continue to do that, we would encourage that to continue. But let's be reasonable about it, and let's not get into newspaper articles that are not accurate, coming before you folks that are not accurate, giving information out in the public that's not accurate. Again, I refer you back to our letter. That pretty much outlines everything that I've said tonight. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Leslie Schwannad, I, I happen to-
Leslie, before we go forward, just going forward, I'm going to try and keep people just do a little more of a time limit.
Yeah, I understand. Because I've been up here many times, right Meg?
Always good though, always good.
Oh, thank you. I am a board member. But I'd like to just tell you how I became a board member. I am the former president of Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization, and I was able to get a wonderful person, Therese Martin, to take over, and she's done a great job. While I was president of Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization, I did get involved with some tenants at Champaign Heights and started to advocate for them. At that time, they didn't have a tenants' association, they, they formed what they called CURB, and I can't remember what it stands for. And some of the councilmen, they had all these activities in the summer. They had a big fair up there, they had the climbing wall, former town council members came. We never had the tenants' association that you're asking for. And we did ask for that at one point. We thought it would be good if the town did have that, because it was Rhode Island law. But CURB was very happy to do their own thing. And again, I got involved because I was involved with the tenants. I can understand these people's frustrations, I can understand my frustrations. Are we doing anything about it? Okay. I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but I'm going to say it. I have had two conversations with two state legislators, one of whom called me. I think, and I think, I don't want to let any cats out of the bag, but what we're going to try, we don't have the funding. But with the state legislators, I said, how about getting some of these congressional people up in Washington to see if we can get some funding? It won't be, you know, washer dryers in each unit. I think anybody who's ever lived in an apartment complex, you don't have washer dryers in every unit. You have a place to go to do your washing. We, it would be my dream, and I am going to be fighting for this with the legislators, to have, and we talked about this at our meetings, that we would have a building handicap accessible with washers and dryers. My sister lives in Peastale Estates. She is an immobile chair, she has MS. She does not have a washer and dryer in her unit. What she does about three or four times a week is she takes her laundry basket, puts it on her lap, and goes around to the building where they have the washer and dryer. I think it would be great to have one in each unit, but I will be fighting for, and, and the board and I have talked about this, to get a separate building. Is it going to be next year? I don't know. We don't, you know, and I would say to the, the tenants too, anybody can look at our budget. That's an open record. These people, the tenants have come to our meetings. I want them to come to our meetings. I want them to let, you know, to let us know what's going on. I'm not a mind reader. I'm glad that, is it Colley? Cali. Cali's come to a lot of, a couple of our meetings. She's got a great spirit. I think that we can work together. It's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be perfect, Cali. We don't have the money. But if we can figure out a way to get the money, and as I said, I'm talking to some legislators, and I don't know what they're doing in Washington, but if there's any money that we could, you know, do something with. We don't have the money now, but we certainly, and they have a great spirit. They're doing things that CURB did a couple of years ago. And that's why I sit on this board, because I was an advocate for the residents. So I don't know what you can do. Somebody talked about a mediation. I think we would be glad to say, I don't, I don't know that you can be involved, but I think the more we talk, and the more we get ideas, and the more that we can figure out how to get money on both sides of the issue, that's when we can move forward. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thanks, Leslie.
Hi. My name is Grover Northup, and I lived in Curtis Corner for eleven years, and we don't have no new bathroom or kitchen. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
My name is Christina Pantoloni, and I've lived in South Kingstown my entire life. I am now currently a resident at Fornia Estates. I just want to say, it's a great thing to have public housing. It is. I'm happy that I have somewhere to go with my children. It's an amazing thing. I think what everyone doesn't seem to see is that we're kind of like, it seems like we're closed off a little bit from the town. It's almost like, you know, the public housing has a bad rep with a lot of different people within the town. And it's become one of those notions that it feels like we're all somewhat neglected. I don't know if it, if the town could even help or be involved in a way that can help us come up with ways for funding. It doesn't have to be about washers and dryers. There's many other issues. Right now, Peastale has a broken playground. I did report that. Is it being fixed? I don't know. Will it be fixed? I have no idea. People with bathrooms that do not work. Flooring's an issue, paint's an issue, mold's an issue. There's a million different issues. You get that with apartment complexes, you get that with regular homes that you own. These things happen. But the problem is, is the funding. And I feel like the town can't or won't or will not be involved. I don't know how it works. But I just feel like, you know, we're closed in in our own little area. And it's great that, you know, the town always wants to, you know, find a way to revitalize everything, make everything pretty. I love this town. I grew up here. It's my home. But we want to have our, our little tiny blocked-off communities from the rest of the town look just as pretty, and become a safe and happy environment and home for our children. And I think that's the main point that some people are missing. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Natalie Sorrentino, and I am a resident at Champaign Heights for six years. When I first moved in there, I had a washer and dryer, but I was told by management that I could not bring it anymore. I couldn't have it there. But I was told that not to worry, that they were going to be getting a laundry room. And that was six years ago. Now they're talking about a possible laundry room and a five-year plan. I've also, I was one of the people who were part of the article regarding my daughter, which we did. I have been since 2012, going to them with a doctor's note regarding my daughter's health, how we need, she had to have her large intestine removed last, last summer, and we need a washer and dryer in the home to keep it sanitary. I use a lot of money every week in the laundromat and having to throw away her clothes and bedding to get her new stuff, because if I go to the laundromat on Saturday, if she has an accident on Sunday, I can't keep that stuff till the next Saturday. And I do home daycare, so I don't have time once my kids get home. I don't want to spend that time again at the laundromat. I want to be with them doing their homework and helping them out and stuff. And as far as like the van, I mean, a neighbor, like my neighbor Cali, who told you she has six children, she wouldn't be able to use that van because there's no seats in it. So it doesn't really do us any good as residents to have one day a week where you could only fit one family in that van, and there's only one seat left and it, all the rest is taken out, because they use it for maintenance supplies in the apartments. As far as things getting done, we have yearly inspections. I've had many inspections where I've told them my paint is peeling, and I've gone into the office three times and asked them if I, if I just buy my own paint, can I just do it myself? I, I still have paint, it looks like balloon, like it peels right off the walls. I have a six-year-old who loves to pick it off more and more. And I've been asking for over a year to have my, I've gone into the office myself. And as far as like letters with the washer and dryer and the article in the newspaper, I've handed my doctor a letter to Mary twice, and she told me that she would bring it to the, to the board and find out, you know, she would give me an answer, and I've never gotten an answer since 2012. And, I mean, they're usually, it, it was just as of this week that Mary had no help in the office. This was like her first day alone. She had Heidi, Holly, and Tracy all in the past, so this is like just starting with her by herself.
Right.
So-
During this portion, just direct your comments to the council, not to-
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. I mean, that's basically all I have to say, that these things that are being said that we're not being truthful about, you don't, they don't, people don't live there, we do. We know what's going on where we live. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Doesn't have to be on this issue necessarily. If you came here to speak about anything, you're welcome to come up and speak. Okay, great. From what I heard here, it seems like there are two sides that want to be talking to each other, and maybe they are in some places. If there's a way that this council can help create better communication by helping put together the tenants' association, I think we're happy to do that as soon as possible, really. And until then, you know, I hope communication gets easier between all you folks. And, you know, I, you know, I, I like Leslie's idea a lot about going to our congresspeople who are the people who might have some leverage with HUD. So, good luck with that.
I'm going to need it.
Any comments from council members?
I just want a couple of things about all the people. Thank you to come, for coming out and expressing your concerns. It's not always easy to come to these meetings and get up there and say something. I'm also part of the PDNRI group, and we've been hearing over the last few months some of the concerns. Cali has been coming to the meetings and just bringing to our attention things that the group might be able to help with. I also think Cali might have not given herself enough credit, the work that she's done over there to organize residents and plant flowers and just bring a sense of pride to the neighborhood is, is really amazing, and you deserve to be commended for that. When Ms. Egan, when you were, when Ms. Egan was speaking, and speaking about the restrictions with HUD, I don't think that could be emphasized enough. It's a difficult organization to work with, and the funds that you guys work with are so limited, that you deserve a lot of credit for trying to work within the, what you're given. I'm glad everyone came out here tonight, and I hope that we are able to appoint that committee to hopefully facilitate some better communication between the parties. I know myself, I've reached out to Ms. Breslin. Our town manager was kind enough to provide her contact information when some of these issues came to light in the newspaper, and I have not heard back from her yet. I'm hoping that I will soon. But I think that all of us up here hear what you're saying, and we want to make sure that, you know, your, your needs are addressed. We're limited in how much power we have, since they are governed through HUD, but I hope that we as a council, I'm sure, will come together to make sure the communication gets better between the parties.
Any comments from council members? Anything too? Just- Well, I will-
Yeah, I do appreciate everybody coming. We always do listen and, and hear what you say, and always appreciate any input you give us. So on a totally different note, I, I will say, I was able to attend the Peastale tree lighting, which was beautiful. There was also several others throughout our community. And I would like to thank our staff of South Kingston Parks and Rec for putting on a wonderful tree lighting as well. And it really is a beautiful time of season to see this all come together. So I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday.
This is, this is from the Rhode Island State. This is the, the law that I think, and I, and I don't think any of us could, can say that we don't understand that there are issues going on and, and that there are, you know, HUD to deal with. Like, I think we all get that. I think what they're really trying to ask for is this Board of Tenants Affairs, which gives them four members, which gives the town of South Kingstown four members to address the South Kingston Housing Authority. So it gives these tenants the, the power to state what is important to them. You know what I mean? And then they can also veto what the South Kingston Housing Authority has. So it gives them real power, the people that are living in the, in the place. And that's what they're asking for. Okay?
We got it.
I agree with, with what you want to establish. And, and let me just say this, that when you went on the website a couple of years ago, it had tenants' association, but there was nothing there. So maybe you people, we can form this thing, because when you went on the website, just had the title, and there was nothing. So-
Abel, is this something that we have to decide or put on the agenda, or?
Well, we can't decide anything during comments from interested citizens. I think this is a situation where we just advertise for applicants for the Housing Authority Board.
I think what I would suggest is, let me take a look at the statute, let me look at what the, the entire procedure is, and I'll lay out a process in conjunction with the Housing Authority for the council's review. Okay?
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Laura Morrow. I live in Fornia Estates. September, I had come into the town hall to apply for an application to be on the Board of Affairs. I was given an application, but I wasn't told that it didn't exist. As, to back up Cali's, to have washers and dryers in our home, only because it's, I don't know how to put this where it's not, where I'm not offending anybody, but certain people have certain problems that we can't really share washers, and we have to make sure that they are kept sanitary. And I think most of us don't have the hookups anymore, but we can put our, the roll-away washers in our apartments. Flood insurance a month costs about fifteen dollars a month for earthquake, you have to get the earthquake. And flood insurance, about fifteen dollars a month. I think that would be perfect, if we can at least have those. And maybe if somebody can help, maybe get us an electrician to upgrade our, our apartments. I don't, that'd be great.
Thank you. And my understanding is that the- And my understanding is that among the tenants will actually have to elect four members to serve on this board as well. So, you might want to go through that process with some of the folks over here.
I'm curious if Meadowbrook would be even, would have also representatives if such a board were created, if Meadowbrook would also have representatives. Possibly, as you said, this board was created before that was even there. So you're only talking about representatives from Champaign Heights and Fornia Estates. So, I think the best thing to do is have Steve look into the statute, see what it is, and if there is going to be a board created, to also include Meadowbrook as well.
I have a question.
It would be something that would be going forward.
I just had a question for Steve. I had emailed you about possibly getting the minutes from some of the meetings and I wasn't sure where we stood with that from the housing authority meetings. I know that you might file them differently because of HUD, just to keep us in the loop of, you know, some of the situations you're dealing with. Is that possible? Like we do with the other meetings that we get the minutes for?
If the housing authority before the... I know they're on file at the housing office, but they, on... They're legally required to send...
But we could request them in person at the housing authority?
Yeah, I think before I see your question, I'll... I'll turn my page.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I think it also speaks volumes that we have representatives from the housing authority here. I think that shows good faith that they are trying to listen to what... So, you know, they're here, they want to hear what you have to say, and are working very hard, I'm sure, to try to resolve.
So, I think no more public comments. At one point, there were no more public comments. Are there still people who now want to speak again? All right. Well, with that, I'll just say happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, and we'll move on to the town manager's report.
One item that I would report on tonight, I've been in discussion over the past week with Small Business Administration. They are reopening the funding for the Superfund Sandy damages. And we will post this on the town's website, but the recovery improvement for small entities for disaster recovery could be important to any of the businesses that lost either inventory or buildings with loans up to $2 million. Homeowners, in terms of losses, can be as much as $20,000 to $40,000. Interest rates at about 1.6%. They're going to be opening an office. We wanted it opened in South Kingston. They ended up in Westerly, figuring that there was more damage down there than there was in South Kingston. But this will be available on the town's website for any of the businesses or residences that had damage as a result of the storm and were not deemed eligible on the first go-around with the SBA. So, we'll also get that information up to the Chamber of Commerce as well. I don't have any other items other than that from the reports that I've given you. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, I do wish you all a good Christmas season.
Anything from the solicitors? Great. I don't believe we have any appointments to make. We have one. Oh. Yes, yeah. Right. Oh, yeah, I think that's on the... All right, so that brings us to item 13, New Business. And there we go. 13D is a resolution appointing blank to serve as a resident representative on Gardner Road Ad-Hoc Committee, being organized by the Town of Richmond, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated December 7, 2015.
We received one statement of interest in application form from Mark McGivney that lives on Gardner Road, and that's the only... Received to date.
Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to appoint him.
I make a motion on page nine, letter D, to appoint Mark McGivney to serve as the resident representative on the Gardner Road Ad-Hoc Committee, being organized by the Town of Richmond, and as further described in the memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager, dated December 17, 2015. December 7, excuse me, 2015.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item E, under New Business, is a resolution accepting the reports entitled Matunik Village Plan Report, Town of South Kingston, Rhode Island, October 2015, and West Kingston Village Plan Report, Town of South Kingston, Rhode Island, October 2015, compiled by the Horsley-Witten Group. Further, and as recommended, the council refers said reports back to the planning board to devise an implementation program prioritizing the recommendations of the respective reports as applicable.
I think the, you know, Vin and Doug made the presentations. We certainly are available to answer any questions. We are looking to get it back to the planning board so they can look at the adjustments that will be necessary with the comp plan.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the reports entitled Matunik Village Plan Report, Town of South Kingston, October 2015, and West Kingston Village Report, Town of South Kingston, October 2015, and further recommend that the council refers said reports back to the planning board to devise an implementation program prioritizing the recommendations of the respective reports as applicable.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item F is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield for one 2016 Chevrolet Express cargo van in an amount not to exceed $31,951, including trade-in allowance and equipment transfer installation, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated December 7, 2015.
Only one bid was received on it, recommend to approve as presented.
I make a motion to approve letter number F for the bid to Liberty Chevrolet.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item G is a resolution authorizing the renewal of annual software support fees with Tri-Tech Software Systems for the period January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $17,409, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated December 7, 2015.
Chief's recommendation shows the funding sources here, as well as Jim McGill documents all of the different functions within the software that are necessary. Request approval as presented.
Motion to accept agenda item 13G.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously as well. Item H, that's where we are, right? A resolution authorizing an amendment of award of contract granted on November 23, 2015, to AmeriGas Propane in Pennsylvania for gas, liquid propane, to increase the increment from .278 per gallon to .350 per gallon, dollars per gallon, sorry, according to the terms and conditions of the state Rhode Island Master Price Agreement bid specification. It's further described in a memorandum from the financial controller to the town manager dated December 3.
The Master Price Agreement as originally presented had to be corrected by the state. We need to adjust the approval the council provided last month.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item 13H as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution authorizing an extension of award of contract granted on January 12, 2015, to Santa Buckley Energy for the purchase of unleaded gasoline from January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2016, at the Oil Price Information Services Daily Low Price Port of Providence or Boston, plus the increment of .0497 dollars per gallon, in accordance with specifications as described and awarded by the Town of Smithfield on December 19, 2014.
We approved, last year the council approved the first year. We're asking to extend for one additional year at this point.
I make a motion to approve 13I as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item J is a resolution authorizing extension of award of contract granted on January 12, 2015, to Superior Plus Energy Services of Providence for the purchase of ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel from January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2016, at the Oil Price Information Services Daily Low Price, Port of Providence or Boston, plus the increment of .0321 dollars per gallon, in accordance with specifications as described and awarded by the Town of Smithfield on December 19, 2014. Yes. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve 13J as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got it. Carries unanimously. Item K, Resolution Authorizing an Award of Bid to Civic Plus of Manhattan, Kansas, for the town website design project in an amount not to exceed $22,000, including a $3,000 contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Information Technology Director to the Town Manager.
As noted in the work session earlier this evening, we originally received 15 responses. We narrowed it down, interviewed the top four. Each of the firms presented are well-qualified. We believe that Civic Plus can provide the town with the most efficient use of the funds and to give us the product that we need. Essentially, this will provide us with an opportunity to have a user-friendly for data entry into the system, as well as to be able to have a complaint reporting system. It'll also be used as a way of moving the town into dealing with other social media outlets for the dissemination of public information. This was approved through the capital budget in the current 15, 16 year.
Motion to approve item 13K.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to our last one. Item L, A Resolution Authorizing a Conditional Award of Contract to Kirsage Energy of Watertown, Massachusetts, for solar photovoltaic projects for the Rosehill Landfill and West Kingston Superfund Sites, respectively, subject to the following. One, concurrence by the Town of Narragansett for the Rosehill Landfill and West Kingston Town Dump, and the University of Rhode Island for the West Kingston Town Dump and University property. Two, the approval of a contract by the town solicitor for both sites. Three, the approval of a power purchase agreement by the town solicitor for both sites. And four, landfill beneficial reuse approval by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Region 1, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager.
As noted in the pre-session this evening, what we're looking to do is to have the council approve an award of program to a solar company. We will then need to negotiate each of the contracts that are necessary. We've set up a consortium involving the university, as well as the town in Narragansett. We're looking at placing a solar farm at the Rosehill Superfund Site, as well as the... There's four sites at the university as well. We're anticipating that the program will operate with a virtual net metering, but we will also provide the university with the opportunity to look at a behind-the-meter use of the facilities. We'll also have to work with the EPA and the State of Rhode Island as far as dealing with beneficial reuse. We will be back to the council in terms of formal approvals of the power agreements that would be necessary. As I also noted in the pre-session, we'll also have to deal with addressing the question associated with property taxation on solar farms, because this is but one of multiples that could be coming forward over the next several years. As the technology changes and the cost efficiencies are there, we may see additions. It is important, when we did the review, there were 10 proposals received, five that were interviewed through the panel, including the town and the university's consultant, is that these, this project needs to be completed no later and operational no later than December 31, unless we see congressional extensions of the federal tax credit program. So, when we reviewed the contracts, we looked at the background of the companies, we looked at their ability to be able to meet and perform within that constricted time limit, and we also looked at how they would be establishing pricing. We felt that the company as presented this evening will provide the towns and the university with the best solution at this time. If it doesn't work, we'll have to take a look at revisions to the recommendation that we're making this evening. But tonight is simply an affirmative action by the council on behalf of the university and Narragansett. It's also important to note that you have letters of support from both the university and the Town of Narragansett to go forward with the recommendation as presented here this evening.
Great. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we accept item number 13L on the agenda as presented.
You need the language, Steve? In the motion? The conditional language?
It's on page five of the...
A resolution authorizing the conditional award of a contract to Kirsage Energy, 480 Pleasant Street, Suite B110, Watertown, Massachusetts, for solar photovoltaic projects for the Rosehill Landfill and West Kingston Superfund Sites, respectively, subject to the following: concurrence by the Town of Narragansett for the Rosehill Landfill and West Kingston Town Dump, and the University of Rhode Island, and the West Kingston Town Dump and University property; two, the approval of a contract...
Excuse me. Could I add on to the end of that university property, Comer, subject to the approval of the Rhode Island Council for post-secondary education and the State Properties Committee as required. The university asked for that amendment this evening.
Okay, yes. I don't think I caught all of that sentence, but Dale, did you catch that?
Dale's got it.
You can say with amendments included.
Yes. With the amendments included on item one. Two, approval of a contract by the town solicitor for both sites. Three, approval of a power purchase agreement, PPA, by the town solicitor for both sites. And four, landfill beneficial reuse approval by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Region 1, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated December 7, and entitled "Superfund Landfill Solar Energy Photovoltaic Development Recommendation."
Second.
Great. Any comments, discussion? This is good. Now we just got to get it done before next December 31. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. It is 9:57. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? A vote of four to one.